Good afternoon, this is the Board of Sanderson Appeals Public Hearing for March -- shoot, Public Hearing for March 31st, 2015. The zoning calendar, new cases, item number one, 30313BZ, 506510, Brook Avenue of the Bronx.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I know this item was on the calendar once before, but it was adjourned, so I think this is the first time we've had a chance to present in a public hearing. What I'd like to do is go through some basic things, and maybe in the course of that, as well as the presentation by the architect, we can also address some of the issues that were raised at the executive session yesterday. So this is an application by South Bronx Overall Economic Development Corporation to develop a 36-story affordable housing project -- 36, I'm sorry, 36-story, 36-unit affordable housing project with community facility for church at 506-510 Brook Avenue. There are three lots currently, two vacant lots, which are owned by Sobra, a third lot which is owned by Senda Benediction Church. And So- South Bronx Overall Economic Development Corp. is a -- provides a variety of social services to their community in the Bronx, including education, job training, and through this particular arm, they do an extensive amount of development of affordable housing in the Bronx and in Upper Manhattan as well. What I think I'd like to do is have Antonio Walker of Body Loss and Architects take you through a little bit of the project, and then we can answer some questions.
Good afternoon, I'm Antonio Walker from Body Loss and Architects. The Senda project is located on the corner of 148th Street and Brook Avenue in the Bronx. It is a site of three existing lots, two of which are vacant, the third is occupied by an existing five-story building. And surround -- the surrounding area, as we've indicated here, is surrounded by a mixture of five-story, six-story, two-story, and a few blocks away, 17-story buildings. The building that we're proposing is a six-story building, mixed use with a community facility, a church, and 36 units of residential housing. On the cellar, there would be a fellowship hall for the community facility and mechanical space for the community facility, and for the residential tenant community room, and also mechanical and bicycle storage. On the ground floor, that would be the main sanctuary, and the residential lobby and one zero studio apartment. The second through sixth floors would be a typical layout, a mixture of two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and studio apartments. Then on the roof, we would have an accessible patio available for the use of the tenants, with some green roof area, and a mechanical room, and elevator bulkhead. This elevator bulkhead is with -- it is a permitted obstruction, but it is also within the maximum building height allowed by zoning, and complies with all required setbacks.
Before you go on, so with respect to that, so there is a permitted obstruction, it is an elevator bulkhead and a
And mechanical.
Mechanical to that extent, isn't there, because it's taking up the entirety of your -- or almost the entirety of your front, is there a calculation that?
No, this is actually, it's in the rear corner of the building, so this, this is Brook Avenue, this is 148th Street.
It's on the back.
It's on the back corner, so it is 20 feet from Brook Avenue setback, and it's setback more than 20 feet from 148th. So on our elevations, you can see the main building is, it is 588, which is the base zoning height, and then the mechanical bulkhead is, brings it up to 70, or 698, which is We've also prepared two streetscapes, photo streetscapes, which show that the, our proposed building is in similar height to the surrounding, the surrounding buildings. There is a five-story building adjacent to our proposed site, and so our building would be, would be six stories in comparison.
So what's the actual height of the adjacent building?
I don't have the, I don't have the exact height in feet.
Because it's the same height as your, the building you're going to be removing, so is that building already down?
No.
No, so it's, it's the height of the building that you're in control of, so can you get us that actual height?
And across diagonal corner is, is a six-story building that's existing, and our proposed building is, is going to be approximately the same height as that diagonal building, and, and in terms of the contextual facade, we are proposing materials that are reflective of that existing building.
So we really need the heights, because that's how we determine whether you're in line, because floor-to-floor stories don't really mean anything, because some stories are eight foot floor-to-ceilings, and others are 12, so that doesn't really tell us the context, right? Heights do, so.
I mean, to the extent that we can, if that's publicly available information, we'll get it. You know, speaking to my architect previous to this, he thought it was pretty standardized, you know, 11 feet or so, and typically, and I know, I know, new chair, I was going to do things, but in the past, we had, that's, you know, we've sort of done, done stories, which is very easily ascertainable.
This is actually readily available public information.
Okay.
You can go on the certificate of occupancy, and most of the time it tells you the height.
And you would like it for all the buildings?
Buildings that you're using to show that you're in context.
Okay.
If you can't find one, that's a different thing, but generally, that information is available.
Okay.
And by the way, I used to appear here too, I had to give heights. Actual numbers from the ground, heights.
We, we just did a project for, for this client just a few months ago, and we provided, we provided stories, and the time was satisfactory. But anyway.
Different context. Different context. I think you're thinking of the one that was sort of like on that
Fort George Hill in Washington Heights, yeah.
Yeah, that's sitting out sort of in the middle of nowhere, in a sense, and, and the only, you had larger buildings
Right.
Adjacent to that, so I wouldn't characterize that we only asked for amount of stories, I think that there's precedent for
We will provide whatever information the board wants that's publicly available.
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of the presentation? So, you know, one of the things that Sobra does is, is they seek out opportunities where they can provide affordable housing wherever they can, particularly in their core neighborhood. And this particular neighborhood of Mott Haven in the Bronx, at least according to Census data, is, is actually one of the poorest neighborhoods in New York City, and desperately in need of some affordable low-income housing. This lot, without the help of the church, and under the existing R6 zone, just could not make anything work in terms of the economics of affordable housing without, without some type of variance. So we're asking for, the ask is basically an additional 10,700 square feet of floor area. Some of the other variances are relatively minor, we're asking for four additional units beyond what we'd be able to have, lot coverage exceeds by 2%, and the parking issue, which, which was, I know, discussed at, at the executive session yesterday, which I think we're going to need some time to provide more documentation, depending on what, what the board wants on that. I've had conversations with my client about typical population that they deal with in terms of proposed tenants and this, and the likelihood of those tenants needing cars, and I do believe they have some data, I don't have that with me now. The other thing we could provide the board is surrounding area, and what lots, which I think are, there are a fair amount, or garages are readily available.
Okay. So, but you'll provide information on what's typical of residents in this area in terms of parking ownership, and maybe Sobra's own tenants?
Yes.
In terms of car ownership.
I think another question that came up at executive session yesterday had to do with whether the community facility church use generated any need for parking, and speaking with my architects, they tell me that in fact it does not, as a house of worship.
In other words, there's no, in the zoning resolution, it doesn't
That's right.
Trigger parking, because it's less than certain.
(inaudible)
Is that true?
(inaudible)
Yeah. We'll check, did you check the zoning resolution?
We'll cite you the section of the zoning resolution in our next submission.
Yeah, because you've got, you've got a, I don't know how many people at seats, but you've got to be able to do the whole, you know, seating, triggering
This is fixed seating.
You know, X amount of cars.
Fixed seating.
No, it's rated capacity of the largest room, and
Public assembly.
Yeah, and it's the public, yeah, so, but, you know, I don't, I don't know the requirements for the R6 off my head, but additionally, there is a certification at city planning to actually waive it for locally-oriented houses of worship, so even if you do have a requirement, you have a
A way away.
A way out that is not the variance process.
Right. That's still before the BSA, not in city planning.
No, it is a city planning certification, it's a city planning.
The board has been guided by that, with
Right.
Yeah.
But you need to go through that calculation, or show that, that you understand it.
We will do that, we will do that, I, yes.
So there were lots of other questions, so I don't know if you wanted to address those, or you just, because I, what I didn't understand in terms of the timing of your submission is you asked for an adjournment to respond to our comments from February 3rd, but then you didn't really respond to all the comments, so I didn't know why you were delaying the submission so much.
Well, it took some time to put drawings together, we were also looking as to whether or not there in fact was a Phase 2, which we discovered there was not, so we will in fact have to engage one of the consultants, and they will have to do borings and laboratory analysis to get the Phase 2 going, and get it out to DEP as quickly as possible, but
Well, you need to get a Phase 2 work plan approved by DEP.
Understood, I mean, all that would have to happen before this board would be able to sign off on, on the environmental, and we'll try to put that in motion as expeditiously as possible.
Okay. And then with respect to the other questions, you want me to go over them, or?
Um, yes.
Okay, so, let's say, there were new questions, which were establishing the heights of the surrounding buildings, and the height of the adjacent property.
Right, so we discussed that.
But the statement of facts needs to be revised to incorporate the submissions that you just made, that, for instance, there were photos of vacant lots provided, but with absolutely no explanation for how come, that's very nice, there are some vacant lots, it doesn't show you anything.
Well, there was actually an affidavit attached with photographs, which we sought to explain, I think one of the things that was asked of me, at least in my discussions with staff, was, do we have, one of the, our theories of uniqueness has to do with the dilapidated building, next to a vacant lot, with soil conditions that are not, not perfect soil conditions, so one of the questions was asked, are there any vacant lots around that have a dilapidated building attached to it? We went through the 400, my paralegal went through the 400-foot radius, we looked at every lot, and in fact, there were not, that was not incorporated into the statement of facts, but
Right, also, it needs to be a more complete statement, not this affidavit, usually it's like, within a 400-foot radius, there were 400 lots, out of the 400 lots, three were vacant, out of the three vacant lots, two abut this, one doesn't abut anything, and we feel we're unique because, and distinguish yourself, because this affidavit is, is very
Bare bones.
Yes, very bare bones, and actually, one of the photos shows a vacant lot that actually abuts a tenement building, but I would love for you to tell me why this tenement building is more secure, or in a better situation, so it would not be a problem constructing next to it, at least it looks, it appears to me to be adjacent to some sort of tenement. Right, and again, it doesn't have to be the only lot, that's not, you know, it's not unique as in being one, but you do have to establish that there's, you know, there are not a lot of these kinds of situations, or that your lot is maybe smaller than that lot, so can handle better the footings, because there's more room, or, you know, bench footings are something that avoids destabilization of the adjoining structure, you gotta do some work here, right? The paralegal submitting an affidavit, that's not exactly reassuring, if anything, that work should come from an engineer, who's establishing whether the adjoining building is unstable or not. And then the other thing is
Well, let me, let me, so that, is that what you're asking for, in fact, is for an, is for an engineer to provide that data, or for us to take what we had and incorporate it into the statement of fact?
So let's put it this way, you're the arguer, you're trying to make a case for why this is a unique site, you can't just like hand us a bunch of junk and just hope that we make the case for you, you're in charge of making the case, right?
Understood.
So having given, been given that task, which you've had from the beginning, right, how do you make a coherent, supported argument for being unique? And some of the hints are that your soil conditions are different than everybody else's soil conditions, but when, for instance, your engineer talks about something that he worked on, on Cortlandt Avenue, I have no idea where that is relative to this site, I don't know if I can distinguish that, because it's not necessarily near the site, you didn't provide any backup for that, any, a map saying, look, it's three blocks from the site, that would put it within the sort of sphere of influence. You didn't do that. And then the other is, you've got this vacant site, where there is work, work going on on it, so the typical thing is, your engineer calls their engineer and says, can I have a copy of your boring logs, I really need that, and that would help establish the conditions on that site, because that might help, for instance.
We, we will seek to get that, I have frankly been told by, by engineers and, and people who do the boring work, that sometimes the owners get very proprietary about this information, and are not that keen about, about sharing it.
The, just north of here, in the Bronx Chester, Urban and Noel area, there are several sites that were developed by HPD and EDC, that had environmental reviews, where those documents would be public, and, and also, because HPD, who I assume has some involvement with this project, if, if not just to be providing financing, you know, could be helpful in doing that, and Sobra has a relationship with those people, so, I talked to HPD, they've done a lot of work in this area, and will help you.
Right, and by, by the way, just because, it's true, maybe on Madison Avenue, they won't share, but in this neighborhood, they might share, without asking, assuming they're not going to give you a response, that's not how you do your research.
I didn't, I didn't assume that.
Okay, so does that mean you did reach out to the engineer of that site?
I don't, I don't know if in this case we reached out to the engineer of that site, we did, we did provide some documentation, we provided some documentation regarding the lot directly across the street, which, which had similar conditions, but I don't think that, that was, that was unusual, given the fact that it's directly across the street, and we believe, have reason to believe historically, that Brook Avenue may have in fact been some type of waterway, some type of brook, or creek in its history, but, and then we provided some information for the lot on Cortlandt, which is about a half a mile away. We didn't provide an area map, we'll be glad to do that in the revised submission.
But it's a half a mile away, so it's really out of the sphere of influence, right? It's not within the same kind of geologic domain, right?
Half mile away is 10, 10 blocks.
Maybe we better have something local, but along the lines of your geotechnical analysis, it had attachments, which included a map, and the boring logs, which were not submitted to us. Could you please submit them?
Thought we did, but okay.
You gave us the report, but there were no boring logs attached to it, and there was no boring, the location of the boring logs, the borings.
Okay, and ditto, for instance, the plans were revised, I think, there are another set of plans were submitted, but we don't know what changed on the plan.
The roof plan was added.
The roof plan was added? Okay, so, so again, you're the arguer, you're going to try to help us come to a conclusion on your, to your benefit, right? Help us get there easily, not submit just a bunch of junk, and then we have to figure it out, it doesn't, it's not helpful. There should be a cover letter that explains, and if there's a change on the plans, there should be something clear, like even circling the changes, that would be really helpful, bubbling them, then we can see what's been changed, then we know where to look, okay? Then, okay, then there were questions that we had from February, February 3rd, which the general one was, we needed more detail to establish uniqueness, so you need to look at your argument, and you need to see that we're not finding enough meat there, so you need to beef that up, right? Like, why is this site unique? So using the other sites, but being very clear about what's different about those sites from this site, okay? Also, you have this whole Phase 2 issue, perhaps that reveals there's some environmental issues on the site, that environmental issues go to uniqueness, right?
They may, it may not be terribly unique condition in this, in this portion of, of the Bronx.
Okay, but you don't know, so you're, you're not even giving it a college try, right?
Appreciate it.
In terms of the community facility, you say that you're asking for 10,000 square feet, it's true that you're asking for more floor area for the residential use, but in fact, you're only .14 FAR in your request over what's allowed as of, right, if it was a community facility building, or a mixed residential community facility, so the impact of your project is different, right? You don't discuss that in the statement of facts, you don't make an argument. You need to clarify also, the drawings have a disconnect with statement of facts, with their own zoning calculations, which is true on the last submission as well, where the zoning calculations that show that the building is 68-foot high, the elevation shows it's 58-foot 8, add 69-foot 8 to the top of the trash mechanical room, so that needs to be corrected so they match, the zoning calculation sheets wrong. Then you should make clear on the area map where buildings of similar heights are located, right? So that's part of making your argument about neighborhood character, and again, we're talking about height. You didn't discuss, I think this was mentioned, you mentioned this, but you didn't discuss the, oh no, you didn't actually, you didn't discuss the impact on the area of having zero parking, or any of the requested waivers, increased lot coverage, density, et cetera, you have to discuss that, right? You're requesting a variance, so you have to provide the, establish first the threshold of the unique physical condition, but you also have to look at, what's the impact on neighborhood character, you didn't discuss it at all.
I thought there was a provision of a discussion in our, in our submission about
About parking coverage and density?
No, 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 about, about, about the impact of the project on the overall neighborhood character.
That's all need to do with height, that you're asking for other waivers, you have to talk about them. Then the EAS also, it didn't look at the impact of the no parking in the neighborhood, you need some, especially in this case where, in the preliminary analysis, there were checkbox that said yes, 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 there needs to be further study on the environmental about the impact of having no parking. And then also, there, the Landmarks Commission sent a letter stating that though certain addresses within the region will not, are, are not of archaeological significance, there is one address, 454 East 148th Street, that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places, so you have to reach out to the State Historic Preservation Office and make sure that you get a sign off that your project will not have an impact on that site. And there was DEP testing.
Right.
And then, well, you were asking about the underpinning and whether it's unique, so that's a question about, the underpinning of the adjacent property, is that a unique condition, so that you really need to establish that. Maybe what would also go to that is, if you didn't have to, is there a way to not underpin the adjacent property and use a different foundation system? If so, is that enormously expensive, is there something, or you have to do it
Well, they have to demolish one of two buildings that supposedly share a party wall.
Right.
Right, and I do believe we did discuss that in the statement of fact, why that, that's problematic, demolishing the
Which has a rubble foundation.
So it's about the demolition of the building with, that has a rubble foundation?
And which is occupied, the other building will be made occupied.
Occupied, okay, okay.
But they also put in an allowance in case they have to vacate the building, I think in the cost analysis, for a certain amount of time, because it's difficult to, to do that demolition.
Especially with a rubble foundation. Maybe this just needs, it needs beefing up, let's just say, you know, it's kind of a, pretty weak, so, okay, any other? Okay, are there any speakers on this item? Okay.
I would like to add that we do in fact have support from the Borough President, both in terms of actual, you know, financial support, as well as political support, they've committed to the project, and, and the local community board is very much in favor of it, so.
Okay. So then, you know, fulfill their pledge, make a strong application, their response to all the questions, and does it with some real beef, where you're in charge of the application, and you make sure that all the consultants do the right thing, together, you summarize it, you review their reports before it comes here, right, and make sure their reports support your argument, okay? That would be great.
Understood.
Okay. So, then can you give us that?
That's, that's a fair amount of work, I think, I, I'm, I'm less concerned about some of the things that we asked for, which are not so, I'm more concerned about the Phase 2, and the remedial action plan, and the health and safety plan that would go along with that, I think that would take several weeks, I'm thinking, I'm thinking six weeks, submit.
Okay, well, but first, you're just going to submit the Phase 2 work plan, that's before you do a rap and chat, right?
Right, but what we'd like to do is, is to have our consultant anticipate that, and you know, start to put that together.
They have to find something first.
Yeah, you don't know if there's anything
To submit a rap and a chat before.
Right.
Because I think the DEP letter only mentioned
That's the, right, that's the
Lead, asbestos-containing material, I mean, stuff that's everywhere.
They mentioned, they mentioned the possibility that there were some spills within a quarter of a mile, on nearby lots, they had found some other, you know, metals and things like that, so they thought, given all that, there was a possibility that some of these materials existed on the lot.
Right, okay, so, so, but you want to have, you want six weeks to do that, as opposed to just getting your Phase 2 work plan to DEP, and, well, I suppose we need to hear from
Four weeks? Four weeks?
I mean, I suppose in order to support the application, it would be great if you were approved by DEP to do the borings and you had the boring results, right? Maybe that's the best timing, because then you could say, well, this is the amount of remediation we're probably going to have to do, even if DEP hasn't yet agreed to-
Right.
... the depths of removal. So, what do you think that is? Do you think that's four weeks or six weeks or?
I'd say four weeks.
Four weeks to be able to submit?
Four weeks to be able to submit.
Right. No. It takes four weeks for them to get back the response from the remedial, on the work plan? Right, right. So, and so then the boring takes, so if you got an approval on the, on the work plan, then you need about a couple of weeks to do the borings, right? Is that?
I believe so.
Okay, so we're, I guess we're back to six weeks from the start.
Okay.
Okay, so then that puts you at a submission of, of May 14? Yeah, May 14? For a hearing on June 2nd. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Did I read? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 2, 14714 B.C., 4167 Ocean Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Larry J. Altman. Did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. I will of course amend the statement of facts and findings to include the additional information that you had requested. I heard there was also a question regarding a violation for work without a permit, and I did look on the biz system, and actually there is not a violation of that, it's a complaint. And if you read into the complaint, what it says on the biz system is no violation warranted for complaint at time of inspection. So we don't have a certificate of correction because we never received a violation.
Okay, and I just had coupled that with the fact that you were, you know, over on your FAR, so just wondering if that .08 came from-
It did not come from illegal work, as there was no illegal work on this site.
So, so it's really just because maybe the building was built this way, but it's over and to respect, so-
That is correct. This building was built this way in the 1930s. No work has been done to this building since the 1930s.
Okay, so you'll submit a sandworm or something?
I can do that. I will say I got my hands on the belter hide yesterday from 1929. Unfortunately, this building wasn't built yet.
Okay, and so you can't find any other-
I wasn't able to get that overnight. The 1929, I knew I could get immediately. Typically, that's very helpful for most of the homes in this area. This home, it was not very helpful since it wasn't built. There was only one home on this block in 1929. Two houses to the right. So regarding the FEMA regulations, I know there was a concern yesterday. The FEMA regulations, from what I'm being told, the mean high floodplain is at nine feet. The storm surge for Sandy was at 11 feet. The first floor of this building is actually at 12.97 feet. So the first floor of this building is well above both the storm surge from Sandy, which was two feet above that, the high floodplain and above the floodplain.
So we're measuring here always off of NAVD-88, though?
That's what I'm being told from the architect who checked the FEMA regs himself yesterday.
So if you could just make sure on the drawings that all the numbers are given in NAVD-88, maybe give us a survey? I don't know if there was one included.
So the base, actually, base flood elevation-
I did give your board a survey on this stuff.
Oh, you did, okay.
The base flood elevation is actually 11, it's not 9.
Either, he's telling me it's 9. Either way, this building is actually at, it's at 12.97.
Well, I think the first floor is, you know-
At 12.97, in the first floor. And there's a crawl space below in the rear, they did not put in a basement intentionally.
Right, but the existing cellar you're not going to fill in, you're not required to?
No, we're not. We're not being required-
Because it's not substantial construction?
That is correct. We are not being required to do anything to the existing. We are of course not able to do an additional basement or cellar in the rear. It is solely going to be a crawl space.
So that the rear, the extension is going to comply?
Correct.
Good.
In addition, I understand there was a comment yesterday, you would like the additional rear yard dimension added. We will certainly do that. And there was a question regarding showing the modification to the depth of the side yard, and that it doesn't create a new noncompliance. Just want to confirm, your board would like that we can show the required yards on the proposed plot plan.
Right.
So we could just put four boxes effectively on for the yards. Is that acceptable to your board?
I mean, I think it's really just that, you know, the statement of facts could have said, this is a really modest addition, it's only one story, it's, you know, it only impedes on the rear yard to the 23-foot mark at this one spot for only this much, the rest is that much.
Understood.
The side yards are not being reduced to a point of being noncompliant, just to slightly less than that.
I will expand on this. This statement was consistent with the statements that were being filed for the last 10 years approximately and have been approved for the last 10 years. This was filed in June prior to your chairmanship. I do understand what your board would like, and please understand that the cases that are coming through now are the cases that were filed before you were the chair, and things are being modified accordingly as they come up for hearing. So, and I will modify this as requested.
Okay. And also, just to, I don't know if this needs it, I was just surprised that a patio that's four feet up would be a permitted obstruction, but it's again, I don't know that the OBF has ever issued a kind of limitation on the height of a patio.
No, under 2344, it actually just says porches or decks, it's actually terraces or porches, comma, open.
Yeah.
That is the exact wording from there.
Well, it's actually like at the same level as the first floor.
It is, yes.
First floor is kind of high, unusually high.
Yes, it is.
Right.
And again, this house was built in the 1930s, it's how it was built. They're very lucky.
Yeah, very lucky, right. But it's not higher than that, so. And it's not higher than your first floor, so-
No, it lines up with the first floor. They were very fortunate in Sandy that the only effect they had in this building was unfortunately lower level, fortunately nothing above that.
Also, just to clarify about the zoning lot area, that was a little confusing, the surveyor, of course, you did provide a survey, that's why I noticed that.
I will certainly-
Who did the adjoining lot, how come?
I'm not sure why they did that. It is not under the same ownership as this lot, I can tell you that. I spoke with the client yesterday and confirmed that. She's owned this lot for years, she said it is not in the same ownership.
So, but she has use of the adjoining-
She has a deal with the neighbor.
Ah, it's a deal with the neighbor, okay.
That is correct. She has a verbal agreement with her neighbor that until they build something, she is allowed to use their lot, and she is using it very nicely.
Yeah, I see that.
I'm sure they have some sort of a monetary agreement as well, but-
Right, okay, okay.
Maybe she mows it for them.
Maybe just clarify in your statement that the lot, though it's open to the adjoining lot, it's not part of the same zoning lot. You don't have to get into the deal, okay?
I'll be glad to explain that it looks like it may be part of the same, but it is not actually the same, and I will give the ownership of both lots.
Okay. So that's good. So I'm wondering whether if you did all those things, do we have any open questions where you need an answer, or you- I just needed you to make sure that the dimensions, you could read the dimensions.
I'll make sure, darken the dimensions, I'll make that note as well for the plans.
Yeah, I looked at a hard copy, so I can, yeah, online.
I will speak to the architect about that, as, as you know, this transfer over to the electronic format has been easier for some architects than others.
Yeah, it's weird, because either they don't check the PDF before they hit send or something happens in the transmission, I don't know if that is possible.
I know some of them have trouble with PDFs, some of them are still scanning hard copies as well.
Wow.
And some are still hand-drawing drawings.
That's nice, yes. Okay, so I think though, other than that, or there's not an issue, it's just we needed you to clean up the-
As long as the sandworm shows the same building and there's nothing legalizing and-
Right, okay. So should we do it as a closed grant the next time, or should we close it and then-
Close anything.
Close it and, yeah, this is more likely to be okay, okay?
Appreciate that.
So, as opposed to the other ones. Okay, so we can close this and assuming that nothing strange comes up with your sandworm map or whatever. Any speakers? All right, are there any speakers on this? Thanks. Right, so for motion to close.
Chair Prolmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Ms. Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and so, can you submit, when can you submit?
I can submit a week and a half, two weeks?
Two weeks, so if you submit it on the 9th, you could come for-
Space law, you know, uh-
Space law.
Oh, sorry, that's still Passover?
Yeah, the non-work days of Passover are actually Saturday, Sunday this weekend, and Friday, Saturday next weekend, but the days in between are debatable. I'm not sure I'll be able to get information out of my architect.
Okay, so is the 16th better?
That would be better, please.
Okay. So then you could come for a decision on the 28th of April?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Item number 3, 17114A, 17214B.C., 235 Dixon Avenue, Staten Island.
Good afternoon, Stephen Simisich for the applicant. I'm aware of the issues raised yesterday at the hearing, trying my best to respond. I'd like to start with concerns regarding the hardship of the narrow-cornered lot here not being self-created by the subdivision. I can state that I'm in possession of a 1959 map by the Staten Island Borough President, predate 61, showing the same dimensions of the lot, being 25 feet wide, and I can submit that with the rest of revised documents to come. In addition, understandably, those questions raised regarding the location of sidewalks along the site, I spoke with the engineer yesterday, and they're already on preparing the builder's pavement plan, which will be submitted in addition, showing the depths of all the sidewalks, if curve cuts along both streets.
But you're aware of DOT's letter, did you get that?
Yes.
That they just submitted, I think, yesterday?
Yes, yesterday.
About continuing the sidewalks?
Yes, and that's what we'll be seeing in the, what comes out in the builder's pavement plan in regards to that. Also, the statement of facts, originally the plans incorrectly had shown a half-foot closer to the side yard, which caused that error in the statement saying we were asking for four feet, but it actually is the three and a half feet, once that drafting error was corrected and the plans were shifted over. And now moving on to the specifics of the plans, also, the, the project does comply with attic slope height at 7 of 12, this will be shown on the plans, also-
It didn't look like it to me.
Sorry?
It didn't look that steep.
Okay, yeah, I heard from the architect yesterday.
Yeah, but that's, you realize that that's what you're required to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that will be in the plans also. Also, the error regarding the location of the widening line will be corrected on the plans too. And once the building, pavement plan is complete, we'll see location and number of street trees that could be fit at this point on the sidewalk. Now, in regards to the side yard requirement, once again, the plans here incorrectly wrote minimum after 10 feet in between the buildings, where it was our understanding that only a five-foot side yard was required here under 23461C4, because the neighboring lot 245 has two side yards over five feet and totaling over 13, so we're just showing that five.
Right, that's understood.
Okay.
It was more that, for one, you're here for a variance, so we could modify, and anyway, yeah, we could modify the five-foot rule, because in addition, you're 10 feet from the adjoining property, and you're only required to be 8 feet from the adjoining property. So, obviously, because the issue is that you're encroaching upon the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of play there to not encroach upon the sidewalk, so let's see what that means when you do the-
When the payment comes out, which, and also, the DOT letter had said at this point there's no future plans, capital improvement plan to extend the street, but we'll see when the BPP is done.
Right, but no intention to extend the street, but they still have a sidewalk that's continuous throughout the neighborhood.
Yes.
Even the example that you gave-
Okay.
Has a planting strip, a sidewalk, and then a three-foot yard. You don't, I don't think you get that.
I guess once the BPP is complete, we'll see.
Right, exactly.
What comes out, or arises from that. Okay, and then also, there was a discussion meeting regarding meeting the uniqueness here, and particularly specifics of the corner lot study. Well, I can say that, sorry that it had not already been done, but it is being revised to show all dimensions and lot square footages of all the corner lots in the area, and they would believe this additional detail will make it a lot more clear, particularly upon revising the findings, to show uniqueness in our particular site here. And what will come about in those dimensions, as we will express, is the fact that of all the other 25-foot lots that are in the area, most of them all have semi-detached homes, and these were all, these were all able to be built under the prior zoning, so they didn't have to buy by the side yards. And also, there's only one property of the 40 that was built after rezoning, and that is a 35-foot wide site, which is 10 feet more than ours.
What's the date of the zoning that required these side yards?
It was 2005, I believe, I don't know where to have it. October 2005, I had that it went from R32 to R3A, and that's one property of those 40 that was built after 05. But like I said, you know, all this information shouldn't have already been in the corner lot study, it will be in there now and allowing us to beef up the findings to bond it.
Great.
Okay.
What about street trees?
The street trees, yes, once the BPP is complete, we'll see where the locations of them can be along-
Because you have a long front at you.
Yeah, as many as are able to fit on there will, once I see that.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, any other questions? Was there any speakers on this? Okay, great. So, when do you think?
This can all be done within two weeks.
Two weeks. So do you have a problem submitting on the 9th of April? Does that work for you?
9th of April, yeah, that works.
Okay, so for a hearing on the 21st of April.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 4, 20414B.C., 55 White Avenue, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon, please, for the applicant. Good afternoon. I'm chair. There's an application under Section 7344 for a reduction in parking for certain community facility and professional office uses. So I would start by saying I know that during the discussion in the executive session, there were some concerns that were raised over a lack of continuity in the numbers. So what we did today was we brought all the professionals who would be required to reply to the board, and we can perhaps offer some additional explanation. I have with me today Yohai Albo, who is a project architect, I have Jim Heidemann, who produced the EAS, I also have Frank Saint Jacques from my office, who assisted me on the application. So the application is, an application for a parking reduction. The project is a 21-story mixed-use building, which includes aspects of retail use, professional office, medical facility, and hotel. There is a multi-tiered design of the building, a one-story, a three-story, and then the largest 21-story portion, or goes to a height of 21 stories. The building is as of right with regards to bulk. And as is typical with the 7344 applications, we produced a parking study. Michael Flynn from Sam Schwartz Engineering is here as well, I did not mean to ignore him, but Sam Schwartz Engineering, obviously, is one of the preeminent traffic and parking analysts in the city. We asked them to produce a study, and as is the case with prior 7344 applications, we made a determination, which was that when you added up all the peak uses during the peak hour, which would have been 12 to 1 on a weekday, you came up with a parking demand which was equal to 121 spaces. The actual requirement on the lot would be 208 spaces, and the 208 number is one which does appear in the statement of facts, in the environmental assessment statement, although it appears further in the back, in the traffic and parking analysis, and in the plans and zoning calculations. So that number is consistent, and if we have to make changes, which we will upon submission, we will do so. But to, in a sense, to just tie out to that number very briefly, here are the square footages and parking percentages. So there is a demand of 105, 105 spaces for the use group for a medical. The number that is produced is 31,376 square feet of medical office, which divided by 300, 1 per 300, gives you 105 spaces. There is a use group 6B office component, which is 8,196. When you divide by 300, it produces 27 spaces. There is use group 6 retail use of 16,003 square feet, divided by 353 spaces, and the use group 5 hotel, which was based upon a calculation of rooms or guest suites. This is in accordance with the parking regulations under the zoning resolution. I know that there had been question about beds, and I understand from 4421, and Yohai can probably talk to this, that the requirement actually is tied to the number of guest rooms. And we do have 183 guest rooms. We're also- We're also...
How is, sorry, how is?
Sorry. It's beds.
It's beds.
Right. The, the discussion at the executive session was whether or not this was the odd hotel which had one bed per room, the answer actually is that it does. There's a king-size bed in each room, this is basically because of the smallish size of the guest rooms, which range between 250, 300 square feet, and so a decision was made when designing the hotel to produce one king-size bed per room with a shared corridor for every two rooms, such that should families or groups of greater than one wish to stay in the rooms, they're able to basically get one key which opens onto two rooms, and that's basically able to subdivide the rooms that way. So when looking at the peak numbers and the demand, the total required parking would be 208.
The banquet facility.
So we can, we'll finish that, and then we'll talk about the banquet facility. Would be 208. The use group for a medical office and use group 6B office, professional office, would generate a demand of 132. What sought pursuant to the special permit is to reduce that by 50%, as is permitted under the regulation to 66, meaning that there would be a total requirement after, or a total provision of spaces after the reduction to 142 spaces. Typically, in these applications that we've done, the board has required that the parking demand for the spaces that is generated at peak hours is met on-site, we do that here. We basically have a peak demand absent the banquet hall, which we'll discuss, of 121 spaces, and we meet that with 142 spaces. While the board has not always engaged in this analysis, we would also note, and Mr. Flynn can discuss this on behalf of Sam Schwartz Engineering, that there are, there was a diligence done, there was counts done on both off-street and on-street parking spaces within a quarter-mile of the premises, and it was determined at peak hour that there were 208 spaces, 208, available on-street, and 237 spaces available off-street. And the parking counts, I know that the board has in the past discussed whether or not parking numbers were generated, you know, people have attempted to use parking numbers that are outdated, 10 years old or older, these are all generated within, with counts which have been done within the last year, and any parking data and studies relied upon were all primarily between 2012 and 2014, with some relying, I think, on 2010, but consistent with the methodology that's always been used. The banquet hall, the banquet hall being cellar-floor area has not been counted as far as, for zoning purposes, for generation of parking spaces. Why are we confident in this? We're confident in this because this application has already been filed at Department of Buildings, obviously for generation of the objections, but has already been filed and permits have already been issued, and the building is under construction. And as Mr. Albo tells me, the building is already up structurally, I think, to the seventh floor. So not only was the application examined, the DOB was also audited, and the parking numbers were also audited. So I know that the methodology that was arrived at by Mr. Albo is correct, because the banquet hall is in the cellar and was not generating any zoning floor area for purposes of parking calculations. However, we did include the parking demand generated by the banquet hall, correctly noted by Commissioner Otley-Brown, was only utilized between 4:00 and 10:00 in the evening. So that is, that is an accurate statement, and we discussed that with Mr. Flynn. We're well able to go, go come back to the board with a revised analysis to see what happens and what that looks like when you use that from noon on. Because while it would be possible to condition the grant and say, you know, you can't use it for any luncheons, it would be foolhardy to not make the examination of whether or not realistically that would happen. So we do want to take a look at that, and the parking numbers may change based on that, but the only thing I'd say, because I know there was some back and forth with regards to the numbers, we're confident in the methodology, methodology that was used in the Sam Schwartz parking study, and we're also confident in the zoning calculations, which generated the 208 maximum spaces required, because again, not only did we review them, but they were also reviewed by DOB. So I know that the board had some specific questions, I'd be happy to have Mr. Albo, Mr. Flynn, Mr. Heidemann address any of the specifics with regards to any of the studies.
No, I just want to say one thing, what you heard me say, or you said?
I already know.
Right? So I spent four hours trying to figure out what in the hell this application is.
I understand.
That's not okay. You, you picked out the places where maybe it said 208, there were plenty of places where it had said 185. I write notes in the order in which I discovered.
Understood.
Kept writing 185. Finally got to Sam Schwartz, and I get to 208. I start screaming at my computer and writing what I'm about to say to you in the review session.
Understood.
So why is that okay?
It's not okay, Chair. We, we do not mean to waste the board's time on any manner, we apologize for any type of confusion, and we'll make every effort to, to make these things much clearer in future submissions.
And, and just to add, much clearer, you're, you personally are responsible for the work of all of your consultants.
I am.
You must read their reports. If their reports are incorrect, you go back to them and you say, this makes no sense. Those drawings are from before, when they were double stackers. We have triple stackers now.
Correct.
So that I, I started off with this by reading the EAS, because that's going to go to the parking question, it's completely wrong.
Right, the EAS is based, is based upon, is based upon old plans and old calculations. It is.
Everything's wrong.
Right.
So it's like, like I couldn't believe it.
I understand. I wish, I wish you hadn't started on the EAS, but...
I have to start on the EAS.
I understand.
Because it's parking, it's a main question is, can we afford to lose parking spaces?
Right.
And then, by the way, the EAS doesn't even mention that Sam Schwartz did a study. I found out about that later as I'm going through pages, look at that, it's a Sam Schwartz study.
I think it has been a, I think it has been, you know, it's been a challenging process for us, but, because there's a lot of moving pieces as far as the application is concerned, but we do understand, we again, had no intention and never intend to waste the board's time, we apologize, but, but every future submission will be crystal, crystal clear and will be thoroughly vetted, so, but we did, we did note those errors, and we're sorry.
I expect you personally to read every part of the submission.
I'm on the case.
I expect you personally make notes, oh, look at that, this one doesn't match.
Understood. It's part of, we do submissions on time, and we are, we're clear in our submission, so we understand. Thank you. No, we appreciate it, I mean, it's, it's important for our practice, so thank you.
Right, otherwise, I don't know what I would throw at you the next time.
Understood. Don't throw the MacBook.
Throw the shoe. Okay, right, the shoe. Okay, so what were our, let's go through the questions, I think, well, there were a million for the EAS, but I don't even know if there should be questions, it's such a piece of garbage, excuse my friend.
Yeah, we'd be, we've spoken to Mr. Heidemann, Mr. Heidemann's aware of the fact that there's both, that internally there's some inconsistent numbers within the EAS, and so we're happy to revise that and resubmit. So to the extent the board would like to hold off on that for now, that's fine by us, and then we'd be happy to talk about the methodology at DOB as well as the merits of the application.
Okay, so we also need to know the distance to public transportation, because that runs to a lot of it.
Right.
It said that it's, whatever it is, quarter-mile, half a mile, or whatever, but it should show where the subway stops, where the bus stops.
We're going to submit a map showing that.
Okay. Then the main question, I think, all of us asked is, now that we're looking at the right set of plans, and we see there's triple stackers on second floor, why can't there be triple stackers on the first floor?
Right. I, I mean, I would ask Mr. Albo to, if he would kind of address the stackers issue. I would note that the, the floor-to-floor height on the initial floor is, is, I think it's a slab-to-slab is eight foot eight, and the upper floor is, is larger, over 21 feet, so, but there was a, I mean...
It's a design decision.
Correct, it's a design decision, and, and there's, there was, you know, there's a discussion with regards to the site design, the, I mean, I would add that this site has been a challenging site for a lot of reasons, primarily because there was a significant amount of remediation which had to be performed on the site. So there was, you know, as we can document, there was probably about over $4 million put into, into removal of contaminated soil, which was an arduous process, which was completed. And moreover, the site is somewhat special in that, for a 50,000-square-foot lot, we are devoting, I believe, something like 40,000 square feet to publicly open, to publicly available open space. So there is a publicly accessible park on the site, there is access to that park, which could have been devoted to parking, was not, so that was a, there are site design decisions that went, you know, both, both positive, so to speak, and negative, we feel that the overall design is useful.
Was the, the decision to have so much sort of park area due to the remediation problems that you had on the site? In other words, you did not want to necessarily disturb the soil, and so you created...
No, the, the...
Or it was just purely a design issue?
Purely a design issue, I mean, the, the primary location for that park area is on a raised roof, so it wasn't even impacted by the, by the soil conditions.
But so, in terms of the stackers, for instance, eight foot, I mean, if, if the banquet facility doesn't count, so you wouldn't have to worry about 44 spaces, or something like that, 40 spaces, we're only looking for 66 or closer to 66, so if you had double stackers on that deck, it would be...
Yeah, absolutely.
And then you'd be done.
You've got the space, you've got the...
You'd have 50 more spaces or something like that.
I, before, before Mr. Albo talks, the only thing I'd, I'd say is that while there are site design issues involved, so we're in a situation where we've got a special permit, and special permits, and 7344 special permits in particular are not based upon need. So when I apply for a variance under 7221, I can't create my own hardship, I have to ask for the minimum variance necessary. We're not in that posture, special permits is equivalent to a legislative determination that the proposed use is within the character of the area, as long as you satisfy the specific conditions set forth in the special permit. 7344, from a practitioner's standpoint, it's quite amazing in that it's simplistic, and really what's asked of you is that you commit in good faith to providing the uses that are required, that are, are set forth on the lot, that you, that you certify in good faith, and that is a, you know, we have plans in a DOB, this is, it's not an issue, and that you condition the certificate of occupancy such that if you change the use to one that requires more parking, that you are required to provide that parking. So while I understand the idea about site design and do you, you know, what's the need for the spaces, the truth is that while there are findings related to the special permit, and we were required to make findings regarding general character findings as well, we're not in a position where we necessarily have to say, you know, why didn't you make the eight-foot eight a 16 feet and put the stackers here, et cetera. For, for our purposes, while, if we want to give the board insight, the additional stackers are, are costly, it's, so there's a, there's a monetary issue involved. In addition, the, when we did our parking demand, we came up with these numbers which indicated that we weren't even going to hit the 142 that we were providing, and while everyone is always parking, 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 here, there was, just looking at the site itself, we found we satisfied the conditions, and if you go into the 445 spaces, which is really a lot in the surrounding area during peak hours, we really felt that as between spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more to add these stackers, we would prefer to come in for the waivers, so...
Right, but in terms of the, this is a neighborhood that's in heavy development, right?
Correct.
There's going to be a lot of competition for those spaces shortly. I don't know whether's, well, certainly the EAS didn't do it, but I don't know whether Sam Schwartz's data has a, sort of anticipates all of those future projects coming online and what their parking needs.
We can have Mr. Flynn look to that, but one interesting thing I would add is that, and I'd have to, I've been informed of this recently, I think through city planning, but I'm going to take a look, that there's certain rezonings in the area which are actually going to end up reducing the parking requirement for some of these buildings, so, so despite that common sense viewpoint, which is, we always want to make sure there's parking, 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 I think that there's a recognition here that in some blocks, including, if I understand, blocks adjacent to this, that they're actually lowering the park, parking demand, but we'll provide more information to the board on that.
Before your DOB plans, you had to comply with the parking, where did you put the parking?
Yeah, it was very simple. Oh, sorry, my name is Yohai Albo, I'm the project architect for SEG and Albo Levers. And in terms of your question as regards to where it was, had to be satisfied, actually, the DOB part of the design strategy, it starts off with the fact that the site was immensely contaminated by previous tank holders that were there, and the cost, it was remarkably cost prohibitive to actually create a subcellar level, that which was one of the original schemes anticipated for this property, is to just create a subcellar level and dump all your cars there, but eventually every foot of excavation on this site, every yard costed over $400, something like such, to just remove from the site, plus, you know, the different sites that had to be involved in terms of cleaning the earth and so forth, and also the water levels, the de-watering that actually had to be done on the site. So at that point, we had to change the strategy as to how, where to place the parking facility. Additionally, we didn't want to, already from the community board, we already knew from reaching out to them before we started the design, that a lot of congestion was very specifically in the particular corners, there's the Brooklyn, the Brooklyn Bowl, there's the Wythe, and there's a lot of congestion there, there. So we already took a strategy to move the parking as far back to the, you know, towards the very side of our property. So from, from there on, we went on to also, we, me and my partner, we both very specifically wanted to encourage this site to actually also socially react to the rest of the, of the developments that were happening there, where everybody puts up a building, you close it off to the rest of the street, and that's where it ends. So we started introducing a pedestrian walkway and a, a public park that's going to be fully accessible. Trust me, it took a lot to convince the developer to do that, but, you know, once you make them understand that, that, you know, it is, there is some quality to what you can bring to us, to a site, to a neighborhood, they, they started going along with it. So the parking issue, what had to design goals in terms of the height of the parking levels had to do with this building department very specifically requiring certain things to be under the 23-feet level, above curb level, not to start counting as floor area, actually happens to be certain levels of the stackers, the DOB did make us count as floor area, towards the parking, so actually part of the floor calculation, a lot of the levels of these parking spaces are actually full floor area accounted for.
At what level are they making you count it as?
At any point that any wheels are above 23 feet, there, even though they are within stackers, they're already making us count.
So on the second, on the first, wait a second, wait a minute, so, but your triple stackers are on the upper floor?
Correct, so there's two curb levels to this portion of the property, it's a true lot portion, so, actually the site has four curb, four curb levels, two for two corner portions, two for the true lot portion, one a curb level up to the midpoint of the block, of the block of North 13th side, and one of the corner of the block, up to North 12th street. So that basically determined the placement of the slab, and then from then on, we went to, we would have opted comfortably to, to actually raise the slab level and do double stackers, double stackers. One of the reasons we started even initiating the conversation regarding the BSA waiver is because we realized that triple stackers are remarkably expensive as well. So we said, yeah, we complied with it, DOB took it, grabbed the FAR from us, which we would have gladly liked to have used for the development, but we still get, that's our conditions, and that's what we had to deal with, so we satisfied it for the DOB. Afterwards, you know, the developer asked me, you know, legitimately says, do I really need all these spaces? So that's when we started approaching the question, you know, if, if it's really, really needed, he goes to me, I'm not going to hurt my building and not provide the parking, because then I, people just won't come. I have to make sure that I do provide that, satisfy the, the need, the actual need. So that's when we started approaching, I said, look, I know there is a BSA, wherever that may be granted, why don't we get Mr. Lobel involved, Mr. Schwartz, you know, Schwartz's office to, to start actually making a study if we do need it, and so when we started finding that the numbers were actually even coming lower than the actual number that we needed even for the BSA, so we asked Lobel to please proceed with requesting this variance, and that's when we...
But in order to get your permit and start construction, you're going to show plans for 52 additional spaces.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't understand your answer, where were they?
It's all triple stackers on that level, that's why it's that high.
You mean, you could add more triple stackers on the second floor?
Yeah, there's more triple stackers, correct.
On the second floor?
Correct.
But you only have eight-foot ceilings, how are you doing?
No, not this side, the second floor of the parking, which is the third floor.
Now I'm confused again.
Yes.
I thought the project is, has on that second, on that third parking level, third parking.
There's only two parking levels.
On that third floor parking.
Correct.
You had, the plans that we have show that the proposal is for triple stackers.
Some, but very few.
No.
With the BSA. With the DOB, it's almost all of them, correct.
Then, I'm even more confused than I was before. Because the drawings that we have show all but five spaces on the third floor are triple stackers.
Schwartz's office suggested, rather than push certain parking spaces, even though the DOB is much more comfortable with, just give me square footage, amount of floor area allocated for it, divided by my, you know, 200, and I'm satisfied with it, they, they decided, look, we need to make this parking facility more comfortable, so I'm going to do it with less, you know, cramming in the spaces, and I'm going to...
So how did you come up with sort of the golden number? Because if, if you were able to put triple stackers on, all triple stackers, on that, I guess it's the second.
Second level of the parking, correct.
How did you come up? How did you come up with the number that you would subtract from that? If you could supply everything you needed, why not just do it?
The reason for it is, is very simple. It's also a matter of, like, if they have to actually designate that many of parking spaces, means they have to cram it in that much more. It means they have to also, it also has to do with how many people you have to employ for that many of cars that you're using. So it's just a number of spaces that there was like, we don't really need this number. Can we reduce the number with the BSA?
Wait a minute.
Sure.
So the plans that we have, we have two sets of plans.
Sure.
One set's in the, in the EAS, which I'm throwing out because it's garbage.
Correct.
And another set is what was submitted with the application.
Correct.
That set shows 52 regular spaces on the second floor.
Correct.
And 29 triple stackers.
Correct.
On the third floor.
Correct.
Plus three normal spaces on the third floor.
Correct.
And that's it.
Correct.
And the 29 triple stackers.
Correct.
Is essentially providing the bulk of the parking requirement.
Correct.
Because you're having 142.
Correct.
Providing 80-something, whatever that number is.
Correct.
Right? So.
With the DOB, we had an option, there were more triple stackers on this level.
And where were the triple stackers?
Correct. Correct. Exactly. So if you look, a lot of them are, a lot of them are just two, one in front of the other.
I was wondering myself.
No, you could probably put it adjacent to the ramp.
Correct. We had adjacent to the ramp.
You had single parking, they had triple stackers.
Correct. Exactly.
And just.
It's stuffed. It got stuffed, but, you know, the DOB rented it, costed us floor area, and they were okay with it, versus putting on all this slab and having them robotically. One of the options was also to create elevators and then actually insert slabs. We found that that was going to be more cost prohibitive, so that's, that's what we asked for.
And, and the reason that you don't, I mean, you have an eight-foot floor-to-ceiling height on your second floor, right?
Correct.
So you could have double stackers on your second floor.
Not really. I think we looked, I think double stack is remarkably hard. I think you needed it to be a little taller than that, you know, to be able to.
14.
Yes, correct.
What's your floor-to-ceiling height on your third floor?
Third floor is 20, 22, if I remember correctly. I forgot already now. I haven't looked at it.
Okay. So let's put it this way.
Sure.
If, when we're doing the analysis with the banquet hall.
Sure.
Which we see is, because this is like groovy dot commers are going to be using this banquet hall all the time. This is going to be like the Standard Hotel. I mean, that's obviously the market you're going for, right? So that's like morning new to night is when this banquet hall's going to be used. Let's just say, the numbers aren't looking quite right, then there's, there's play area here. You could add more stackers on the third floor to adjust to what we discover as the environmental, or let's say, Sam Schwartz analysis reveals the need for more parking for the banquet.
The truth is, between 121 to 160 spaces is an easy range for us, because 145, 142 is the requirement, which is above the Schwartz analysis. In addition, even, even when we asked Schwartz to do the analysis for us, we actually even told him, "Look, at the end of the day, we still have to bring a company to do this, and I don't want them to be uncomfortable with running the facility." So we actually asked of him for made availability and items as such, to be a little bit more generous than what typically is. But in truth, there easily above the 142, there is a good number of 10 to 15 or 20 cars that can be stuffed into the parking facility, even without adding stackers. That means in case there is a night, a little sun exceeds that number that there's an overflow, so it could be stuffed. It is a New York City parking lot, so.
Well, we know it's going to be stuffed more than is permitted by law, but you know, that's.
No, actually, that's not. No, if you can tell us, get rid of all of it, we will gladly do so.
No. No, but the point is that if the analysis shows you need some more spaces, there's room to put more spaces.
Correct.
Because, yeah, that's not something we understood.
Yeah, because you generally don't give waivers.
Yeah.
You can't meet your demands.
Of course. Of course, of course.
Right? Okay. So what we need, obviously, is Sam Schwartz to, she wants a closer look.
Okay. Very good. Any more questions?
No, I think that's it. Thank you very much, Commissioner. It's a nice building, by the way.
Thank you.
The record reflect that the chair used the term groovy.
Groovy.
You said groovy.
I guess that dates you a little bit.
No.
I said groovy.
Yeah.
No, I said it's a nice building, by the way.
No, no, before, about the type of people who'd be using it.
Oh, groovy. Yeah. Groovy hipster types.
But it's a groovy building.
Groovy hipster dot-commer types. I guess groovy and dot-com doesn't fit together, because they didn't exist.
I have to say, I've been running away from the word standard hotel, the entire project. Like, I'm hearing just.
Well, it's an obvious reference, you know? It's an obviously, obvious formal reference. So, sorry. You should have picked a different shape.
Tower on a face is going to be.
Right. Okay. All right. So I guess we're up to the Sam Schwartz question.
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Mike Flynn with Sam Schwartz Engineering. Happy to answer your questions.
Okay. So the first part of it was that I wanted backup. You have in your footnotes what your sources are for your assumptions.
Right.
I'd like to see what that actually is.
Like, the actual documents?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't have to be the 300-page EIS, just the sections where those assumptions are established and what they are, because otherwise it's just like a number on a chart, and it doesn't really mean anything to us.
Sure. We can obtain all those, compile them, and provide them.
And then if we, to Commissioner Otley-Brown's question, we look more realistically at those hip dot commers?
I'll use Uber.
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 Uber commers. And how, we know they do breakfast, power breakfasts. We knew that they do power lunches and afternoons and all that stuff. So you have to really assume some other kind of base on this banquet facility, wherever you get that assumption material from, but this is an unusual, I mean, I hate to use the example of Standard Hotel, but it probably is your target market. And there probably are better ones, even in, say, in Dumbo, things like that, where you're getting the same audience. So I would say that that's a better analysis than whatever you used as your assumptions from way back when with stodgy old folks. Speak for yourself. So it, we, I think, or we think, that that means you're going to have more showing up at your midday peak. I mean, you have to assume that there's banquets at lunchtime.
Sure. We can find some, you know, recent comparable developments and studies and see how that affects it.
I mean, even stodgy old folks go to luncheons, fancy ones. You do. I see you.
I am there always. Crossed. I've crossed.
Some of us young folks are stodgy too, you know?
Right. Okay. Okay. So, I mean, I think that's the most critical part, because we're not persuaded that the 142 is your number. Anything else? No. So I just want to thank you for being the shining light in the application.
That's going to go on the websites.
Testimonials.
The one who knows actually how to do math? Hold it. Okay. Next.
I think, I think that, I think it's a good direction to be, to be looking at the additional capacity which would be created, or the additional demand which would be created by using the banquet hall for other functions. While the board is able to condition the grant, and, you know, at the end of the day, if there was, as it exists, to say, I mean, you could basically put on a condition that said, "No events are available prior to 4:00 PM," but.
No way.
We would not want that, and we'll have that conversation internally and provide you with the additional data.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. And then, I'm not sure if it's worth talking about the EAS, but I would like to speak to Mr. Heineman on the record.
Oh.
Mr. Aguirre.
James Heineman, Equity Environmental Engineering. Good afternoon.